And welcome to the March 28th meeting of Troy City Council. We'll have an invocation by Pastor Husaba from Northfield Hills Baptist Church, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let us bow our heads as we come before our Lord. Almighty Father in heaven, we thank you for the great grace and mercy you've given to all of us. We thank you for the sunshine of today. We thank you, Lord Father, for being there for us, especially in our time of need. We ask for the grace and mercy upon the city council and upon the people of Troy, that you give us wisdom to know your will and to do your will for the city of Troy. We ask that your Holy Spirit will come upon us to guide us and direct us in the businesses of the city of Troy. And, Lord Father, truly, let your peace guide and direct us. We thank you for all that you've done and all that you continually do, even when we're not up to par, Lord Father. We thank you for the continued grace and mercy and this beautiful day you've given to us to live for you. And in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Bartholomew, the roll call.
Mayor Schilling? Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howerlack?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Yes. Councilmember Fleming.
It is odd that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Schilling at the regular city council meeting of Monday, March 28, 2011, due to being out of the county.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Fleming, supported by Councilmember Beltramini, to excuse the mayor's absence. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howerlack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
We have no certificates of recognition and special presentations tonight, no carryover items, nor do we have any public hearings, so we're going to move on to public comment. Just a reminder at this time, if you have any cell phones, please turn them off. Thank you. And you may speak to items on the agenda, off the agenda, whatever you'd like to. We first will hear from Neil Yashinsky. Is there Neil in the room? Then could we have our gentleman from ARP, Bill LaRue and Company?
Thank you and good evening. I want to thank the council for this opportunity to speak. As you know, my name is William LaRue, and I am a 20-year resident of Troy. I'm a volunteer for tax aid for eight years in the city of Troy, and I have been designated as the district coordinator for southeast Oakland County. I came here with many things to say this evening, and as I approached this room tonight, I found that I was wrong. And I want to extend my thanks to this council for the work that they have done in eliminating the tax program in the community center. While we know that it is not completely finished, we know that we are on the road, that we will return next year to help our seniors in the city of Troy. I would also like to thank John Zurlag, the city manager, and his staff for the hard work they're doing. Hopefully, this will become to an amicable situation, and I can assure you that we'll do whatever we can to make it happen. Again, I want to thank this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, just to reiterate, it is the intention to have it as an ongoing program, Mr. Zurlag?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Ron Butterball?
Based on Bill's comments by the client.
Okay, absolutely. Harry Philo?
I'm Harry Philo. I'm a professional research librarian who's lived in Troy for now just over 24 years. I understand how having access to the library is valuable to our city. Our library is a center of the community, is a gathering place for all ages, and a technology center. All of that will end on Sunday, May 1. I attended one of the public engagement sessions last week, and the discussions at my table reaffirmed my conviction that we need a new millage to fund police and fire and public works and other city services, including a library to a reasonable level. Now, I was at the library yesterday. The parking lot was jammed. The place is very busy with all kinds of users checking out books and using everything that a library is good for. I do not support any petition for a charter amendment for a minimally funded library that will take money from essential services. With the continued loss of revenue that's going on in the country, in the city, in the county, the citizens of Troy, I believe, should strongly support another millage request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philo. We now have Richard Peters.
Yeah, a council of folks of Troy. On the library, it would seem to me that this city, there's some things that I think could be done. For instance, I would cut back the police department, the rate of increase from 1% back to where it was without laying off any officers, or to get some bid from them to what they would withstand or be willing to withhold in order to keep that library going. Not only them, but also, like, you could have gas rationing here in this city. I also feel that maybe some of these lights, like where these kids, you know, they have practice lights at the schools, high schools, and stuff like that. Well, they could cut that back an hour or two. Also, unlike in these tennis courts, I've been by them in the wintertime. It's about 30 degrees, there's nobody on the court, and the lights are still going. And it seemed to me, and I've seen this with the baseball as well, so, I mean, there's certain things that I think that we could be done here to do that. And before I go, I just want to make a suggestion to get us out of maybe over there in the Middle East a little bit, would be, there a league like the Contra Duras could come together, and maybe those folks could come up with a plan like that, where they'd have free elections based on towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Margaret Jewell?
Good evening. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Margaret Jewell, and I've been a very proud resident of Troy for nearly 40 years. As a volunteer and longtime user of the Troy Library, I was very frustrated to hear that it was closing. Although I knew about the misinformation regarding the proposals at the last election, it was not until I joined Trust that I realized the library was only one portion of the problems facing the city. I would like to thank the members of the city council and the city manager for all the hard work and the long hours that you've put in to try keeping our city solvent. And I know that you're still facing a lot of challenges ahead. I hope that being a member of Trust and being better informed myself, I will help to take the true information from the decisions that you make and not misinformation to the rest of the residents of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Ziegler?
Good evening.
Good evening. I've lived 32 years at my current address, and I'm very glad that I am a Troy resident. In 2008, by vote of Troy residents, city council members lost the ability to adjust the millage rate upward within the limits that had been set. I'm wondering now if the time hasn't come to reconsider that 2008 decision, now that we've realized how changed our city will become due to the loss of revenue. I would hope that voters could accept that removing the cap would not change the current millage rate unless and until the sitting city council members did something. Therefore, I would ask that as an alternate, a reasonable alternative to raising millages, that council consider a proposal to be placed on the ballot to rescind the 2008 decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. John Vert? Bruce Bloomingdale?
Good evening. I'd like to make three comments, if I can get them in in three minutes. First of all, this is actually four. It's very nice. I forgot how nice it is to start a public meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I think it's something that we should reinstitute in our schools and other places. Second thing is, I truly appreciate each and every one of you council members for the time that you've spent on these public forums in addition to the time you spend here. It's very informative. I attended, I think, three out of the four. I can compliment Mary Kerwin and then extend it to the rest of you because she's not here. It's interesting to see how articulate she is, how she can cover complex problems. I'm sorry. Complex problems.
I absolutely agree.
I'm gonna go on with them anyhow. Well said. And break them down for somebody like me who needs to be talked to like he was nine years old. I have here a poem I'm gonna read you if I can get it in in time. "I watched them tearing a building down, a gang of men in a busy town. For the ho-hee-hove and lusty yell, they swung a beam and a sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled as the men you'd hire if you had to build?' He gave me a laugh and said, 'No, indeed. Just common labor is all I need. I can easily wreck in a day or two what builders have taken a year to do.' And I thought to myself as I went my way, 'Which of these two roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by the rule and square? Am I shaping my deeds by a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town content with the labor of tearing down?' That comes close to me because I spent my entire life as a construction worker. I know what it takes to tear something apart. We've done that. I know what it takes to put back. I do believe that that scenario is true of the city. So I have a question to my fellow citizens and taxpayers. Are you a builder? Is your idea, plan, agenda, thinking helping to restore the city to what it was? Or are you a wrecker? Are your ideas, plans, agenda helping to destroy it or take it someplace where it's never been?" I ask the same question of these council members. In my mind, I hope that we rebuild a city to what it was. Thank you. Thank you very.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bloomingdale. James Savage?
Good evening, Mayor Protherm, members of the city council. At last week's meeting, I circulated a Detroit News report regarding a $40 million public school study. I hope you had the chance to read it, but I would like to read one of the closing comments from that article. It says, "I am still hard-pressed to see the benefits of sending those millions to Boston to line the gilded coffers of Houghton, Muffin, Harcourt. Wouldn't the city of Detroit have been better served by spending that money to keep its schools open or to hire teachers?" The subject of that meeting last week was the ICMA, a report which was flawed with errors and left us with no conclusive solution, and it cost us $100,000. For many years, I have been critical of management's wasteful spending on projects that have not benefited residents. I refer once again to the Transit Center. I am aware that federal money has been earmarked, but I do have a few questions. Has the city received any or how much of that federal money? How much has Troy paid or earmarked for the Transit Center in engineering studies, consulting fees, lobbying fees, staff costs, et cetera? And has the question ever been asked of residents, "Do you want a Transit Center?" So I leave that thought with you. I do have one other comment, and that is on the agenda tonight, on the consent agenda, J13. You will be voting on the A&amp;S catering to provide services to the community center. I would like to say that I was at a function in the community center in January, and the food was excellent. So if that's an idea of the kind of case catering they do, I would fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Kathy Martin?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Martin. I'm a resident of Troy. My message is very short. There are those who repeatedly accuse or imply that our city is now operating at a cost-efficient manner. Yet, for years, Troy's operated with top-quality programs, award-winning departments, and services, with the lowest tax rate of any full-service city in Michigan. I don't see how we could have wasted too much money. Now, all of our municipalities in Michigan and in many places across the country are facing challenges. Troy tried to deal with it early and was not supported. Now we're facing option one because the millage failed, and I don't like what I see. We are scraping ourselves to bare bones in some of the departments. I'm afraid if someone gets sick or goes on a vacation, they're not going to be able to function. We have to find another way. I will help again. I will work hard, and I think there are many people who will, to try to sustain Troy as the place we've known for years and loved.
Thank you. I see we have the Yashinsky family here. I'll call you forward at this time.
Thank you very much for calling us again. I apologize for being late. One of the challenges of raising a family with three kids. I'll be brief. I think most of you know kind of where I'm coming from. As I promised, I brought my three kids here. My oldest, Raphael, and my middle child, Ariella, are gonna speak, and maybe I'll just finish up with one or two remarks. Thanks.
Good evening, Raphael.
Well, my, one day, well, we started making these petitions when my sister, Ariella, here, asked, well, my dad was going to a lot of meetings to try and help save the library, and she went and asked my dad, "How can I help?" And my dad told her that she could make a petition, and she presented to city council. And then Elian was amazed with what Ariella was doing, so he wanted to help too, and as did I, except I was the last, and somehow I ended up getting the most. And I am very proud with both my brother and sister's work. And I'd really like it if we could keep the library open for maybe a little while longer. I'd really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for your listening. Again, we know that you have some hard decisions to make, and my kids' petitions are not legally binding, I wouldn't expect. But we wanted to, you know, help you guys understand how important this is to us, and we know that you have some tough decisions to make on behalf of the city. So again, I thank you all for your time listening today. We'll pass these along to the city clerk, and so thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from Bill Kauker. Yeah?
That's a tough act to follow. Mayor Kerwin and council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for all your hard work. I just wanted to make it clear that from my perspective, and I think those who really have looked at what's going on, that the library is just a symptom of the problem. The library is not the problem. We're in deep trouble. Our Parks and Rec program that my children grew up with has gone away, essentially. Parks and Rec Department, that just three years ago with 32 employees was the best in Michigan, doesn't exist as of April 1. Part of the group is gonna be shipped off to DPW to take care of the parks, and another part of it, maybe four people, maybe five people, we don't know, will be in charge of recreation for the entire city of 85,000 people. We're in, it's not just the library. We are in a serious revenue shortage issue. It's not a matter of hiding money, or 1.7 million, or some other thing hiding that is sitting around. There is not the money to operate this city to the level that we have expected as residents and that we've invested in. I've been here 34 years. It's my money you're throwing away in terms of the investment of what we built. One of the bright, and I just heard it tonight, and so I really want to address this particular issue of the Transit Center. The only thing we have for our future is that, yes, we put $1.3 million away for a Transit Center. We have received $10 million in commitments from finishing that, so we have leveraged that to a $10 million in addition to our 1.3. If you look at every study that's done in the United States, the average return on building mass transit investment is a six-times return on the investment. And you can't compare it, and you say, "Well, we're spread out." Well, yeah, so was Dallas. Dallas got an eight-times return on their investment for a rail system. Phoenix, which is totally spread out, you talk about urban sprawl, Phoenix is the, they got a six-and-a-half-times return on their investment of a rail system. The only major city, metropolitanary, in the country that has not invested in a mass transit system is Michigan. And we're gonna be just like Silver City was, you know, after the railroads bypassed it and it became a ghost town. I mean, rail is the least cost per passenger mile of any transportation system we have. It all takes subsidy. Of course it takes subsidy. The biggest subsidies we have per passenger mile is airlines. You have TSA, you have NTSB, you have FAA, you have airports. They're all built by governments. Yeah, some of the money comes back from airports, but generally speaking, it's all government-funded. If we put a fraction into rail that we put into air, we would have the three-hour trip, which is the potential of this thing, to Chicago. You get in in Troy, and you sit in a train, and you don't have to have the stressful trip to the airport. You don't have to have NTSB feeling you up. You don't have to spend an hour in an airplane that's too tight, and then another hour getting to the city when you arrive in Chicago. And it ties into the regional transit system that has been planned. Private business is finally gonna take over and make the light rail system work on Woodward. We have funding now for Ann Arbor to Detroit. The next step is for us, Pontiac to Detroit, for a commuter service. Who wouldn't like to go down to see a Tiger game without having to get in a car? Who wouldn't like to get to Chicago in three hours? Who wouldn't like to go have dinner or go to a Fox, something at the Fox? And it's not our money, other than a million dollars. Now, if you take that million dollars, you can put it in the library. You can keep it up, open for four months, or five months, or six months. And in the end of the six months, you don't have a Transit Center that could generate $60 million with economic development, and you don't have a library again. At the end, you've lost, you've just, I won't say the word I'm thinking about, you have poured a million dollars down the drain for nothing. Thank you very much.
Thomas Burke. Mr. Burke?
Just a quick, do we really need to go as far as Dallas and Phoenix to look at how mass transit works? Just go 30 miles south to Detroit and see what the great investment the people mover has been. I think that says all we need to say about mass transit in Michigan, and should put an end to that right there. end to that right there. My comment tonight, as we sit here five weeks away from the closing of the library, was why doesn't counsel take tonight, take the example of these children and do something with that petition? Why don't you offer up a resolution to carve out enough money to keep the library open for another year? You know, it's not 4.8 million dollars, it's not 2.5 million dollars. It's probably a million and a half dollars of variable cost. That should be very easy to find. Could be found, you know, we've talked about this time and time again, that's less than the mysterious 1.7 million dollars. If we look at our catastrophic financial situation over the last few years, you know, 2009 is when it started, but 2009 didn't end up as bad as people thought. 2010 is the one we're talking about where we've had less of a deficit than we thought. We've got another 1.7 or 2.4 million. 2011, the year we're in, looks like it's headed the same way. And now the revised estimates for next year show that properties won't decline as much as we thought they would. All that leads to, shouldn't take much to find a couple of million bucks to keep the library open. But, politics comes into play. And we have at least four council members that are riding the library like lemmings headed for the cliff, that just can't find a way to change their mind and come out and change the resolution, change the financing, and keep the library open. So, we're going to take this great asset in five weeks and we're going to shut it down. My last comment, I'd like to change subject a little bit and clarify something that's been said several times. I've said it, others have said it, we used an example of mismanagement. We pick on, people have picked on Mr. Zerlag. You believe we've picked on him. I believe we have not. The question that was asked was, we have a person, seems like a pretty young guy, that gets paid a pension and a salary. Counsel, when those comments get made, turn to Mr. Zerlag and ask him to defend that comment. That's not the point. The point that he brings up is, in his contract negotiation, he asked for a lot of money. That's what he's supposed to do. The problem is, counsel agreed to pay him. That's the problem, and it continues. So we have people that are fairly capable of working that become retired. That's the kind of mismanagement that drives the city's costs up, that will result in the library closing. So now that we have precedent in that, what has counsel now done? We've offered early retirement to a whole bunch of other people. So what should we expect? Should we expect a month or so from now to find the same people coming back and applying to the city for another job, or perhaps their same job back, so they too can collect a pension and collect a salary from the city of Troy? Just the wonderful precedents we've set. It's those kinds of things, just as a simple example, is the kind of things that we need to change, and we need to change them now, while times, and we need lean management. Those alone obviously won't keep the library open. That's just the tip of the iceberg. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Hoderick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and city council members. It's nice to see you tonight. It was nice to see the kids here. We all want the library, we all know it. We just all have different ways we think we can get there, and we think there are different issues. But I do applaud them for being here, and you know the communities behind anything we can do to save that library. I wanted to talk about the fact that I very much appreciated learning more about the state budget process and the impact on local municipalities through the March 9th Town Hall meeting on CMN. The panel discussion with Governor Snyder's Budget Director, John Nixon, Oakland County Executive, Brooke Patterson, Oakland County Treasurer, Andy Meisner, and our own city manager, John Zerlag, was impressive and instructive. There's a pretty loud contingent here in Troy that says the city's pension costs are too high, our city manager, John Zerlag, is incompetent, and the city is mismanaged. They say it so often, other quieter folks around town are inclined to believe this is true. And you know what? You keep wondering and thinking, am I missing something? And yet here it was, lo and behold, a third-party conservative voice saying very much the opposite, actually lauding Troy for its best practices. I quote Mr. Nixon. If you look at why John Zerlag is in good shape, it's because he has implemented a lot of best practices. He's done away with his pension system, he's done away with some of these areas which we need to encourage all cities, villages, and towns to do, as well as the counties. Nixon noted that the state is reducing statutory revenue and will give back a significant amount if the cities, villages, and towns implement best practices like the city of Troy has done already. We are the best-practice city on cuts. I don't know how much more cutting can come. I'm proud of the work that's been done. I'll remind everyone that the city manager retired, left here for another city, came back and has paid significantly less than if we had hired another city manager, another human being to fill that role. We got a good deal. He's a resident, he's doing his job, he's doing the direction he's being given from council and from the residents. I'm hearing a drumbeat in the community that I want to share with you. We're ready to retain and get back to the aspirational place we've always been as Troy. The cynicism, the sarcasm, we're ready to set it aside. Many of us are. We want our services and we're willing to pay for it. I even know of two widows who are willing to do it. It's time. And I want you to know, we stand behind those kids, and we stand behind you all as you make very difficult decisions going forward. I'm proud, I'm proud of the city, I'm proud of what it's done, but it's a shared, it's a shared issue, and the residents are ready to share the burden with the cuts that have happened with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all those who signed up this evening. Is there anyone that I missed? And I bring it back to council and management. Any questions or comments? And we'll move on. Our regular business begins with board and committee appointments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for the city attorney. Since the planning commission is a mayoral appointment, can any of us make that motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Because we have this bifurcated system where it was a nomination, and it was the mayor that did initially make the initial nominations, I think it would be appropriate for you to move on that if council was so inclined. It would also be appropriate to wait if that was council's desire as well.
Councilmember?
Madam Mayor, I, people are going to serve on this board until a replacement is found, and I know that Tom is anxious to serve, but these are mayoral appointments, and, and I would feel better if we waited for the mayor to move the actual appointment, because that is what this will culminate in, so.
To our clerk, may we take no action on this and have it returned to us?
That is correct.
Is that your pleasure?
That's my pleasure. I don't know if my colleagues agree or not.
Fellow councilmembers?
That's mine.
So it will repeat at the next, on the next agenda. Thank you very much. I see no city council appointments scheduled, no nominations. A request for closed session, I-3.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Beltrameini.
Be it resolved that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation. Troy v. Sentry Inc., Pro Car Wash West. Nancy Huntley, Legal Guardian of Carolyn Huntley, a protected person v. Troy.
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Beltrameini, supported by Councilmember Haralak, to go in closed session for pending litigation. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moving on to I-4, this is the agreement between City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society for Management of the Troy Museum and Historic Village. Is there a report? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Beltrameini.
Whereas the City of Troy has owned and operated a museum of local and regional history, now known as the Troy Museum and Historic Village Museum, since 1968. Whereas the museum has provided outstanding programs regarding everyday life in historic times and access to buildings and displays in a historical setting to thousands of schoolchildren and the public for the purpose of providing educational and enrichment opportunities. And whereas the Troy Historical Society is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation incorporated in 1966 to support the formation of the Troy, City of Troy Museum with volunteer services and significant financial donations in its mission to assist the City of Troy in developing the museum site. Whereas due to current economic conditions and budgetary constraints, City of Troy will no longer be able to keep the museum open to the public after June 30th, 2011. Whereas it is the mission of both the City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society to contribute to offer such outstanding historical programs and access to the collections of exceptional historical buildings to educate students and the public regarding our history. Whereas the City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society have entered into discussions regarding allowing THS to use and manage the museum property without compensation from Troy, except as set out in this agreement, and whereas the parties desire to enter into this agreement to facilitate the mutual goals of the parties. Now therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council hereby approves the proposed attached agreement between the City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society for use, operation, and management of the Troy Museum and Historic Village, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Troy. A copy of the agreement is attached to the original meetings of this meeting.
Second. We have a resolution from Councilmember Beltrameini, supported by Councilmember McGuinness, for the agreement between the City of Troy and the Troy Historical Society for Management of the Troy Museum and Historic Village. Is there discussion on this?
Mayor?
Yes.
My only comment, and I had inquired of management about this, was Section 15 in the agreement specifically states that a, an audit is required. And I had inquired whether a compilation or review would be sufficient for the city's needs, and management has responded likewise. I've been further advised by management and also by the Historical Society that, for other reasons, this society currently needs to have an actual audit, not a compilation or review. The reason why this is significant is because of the fact that an audit is, is significantly more expensive than either of the other two options. So, I guess, I don't necessarily want this contract to specifically require an audit if there's a possibility in the future that the third party that is currently requiring an audit will not require it. So, the other option is that if that changes, and if staff would simply bring back to council an amendment to the agreement. But what I would have suggested is, is language said instead of an audit, would have said a compilation, a review, or an audit.
So, it's a very good point, councilmember. I guess to our city attorney, might we include the language that's suggested here, or would that need to come back after this first round?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have not had the opportunity, we received the inquiry very late in the day, and so I have not had an opportunity to talk with the members of THS to see whether they would be amenable to an amendment to this contract. However, it certainly could be brought back at a later time, should they be amenable to, to this change. But since it's already been signed and approved by their board, and it is a change to the contract, I, I just don't know whether or not they would be amenable to a change in the contract from the table.
I do believe once they get the bill for the audit, they might become amenable. It's a very good point.
Absolutely.
So I, I agree, and if it's the desire of the, the board to bring that back.
They're all sitting there.
The money man.
I'm Ward Randall from the Board of the Troy Historical Society. Current, I think this is our third annual full audit, which we have been advised was required for purposes of seeking grants and also at our level of financing in order to get a license to solicit donations from the state of Michigan. So, that is why we drafted the, that's why we suggested having the audit requirement in the agreement. If it's the wish of council to have a more flexible provision, allowing a lesser level of, of audit, like a review audit, under the right circumstances, I don't see why we would object to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, excuse me.
Mr. Randall?
Ward. Yeah?
I see that most of your board is here.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I see that most of your board is here.
Yes.
Would you have an objection to us putting some flexibility in?
I think we even have a quorum, that's a very good.
Yeah, well, it would just be much easier, I think, if we moved to amend for flexibility, unless someone has a vast objection.
And, and let the city attorney and, and the, work out, work out the appropriate language.
I think it's.
Madam President, would you agree with that?
Thank you, Chair.
One, two, three, four. We do have a quorum. Any, all in favor? All opposed? We have your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Randall.
And I do want to thank our colleague, Councilmember Haralak, for noting that. The inclusion of those two words doesn't prohibit an audit, but it does provide that flexibility, and you're right, when scarce dollars are being raised for a very worthy cause, one would like to see them go for that very worthy cause. Councilmember Beltrameini?
I, I'm just asking, for purposes of the clerk and city attorney, how, if they want an amendment, or if they have a record of consensus from the board, how do you want us to handle that?
I have not even repeated exactly what's come before, so at this point it's still yours, until the chair repeats.
I have a second.
Okay.
Well, then, I think Martin's right.
Okay. Councilmember Haralak?
Well, if, if we could just include, there's a, in Section 15 there.
On page eight.
I would change the title to Financial Report, and then I would say, let's see here, by November 30th of each year, THS shall deliver a copy of its annual financial statements for the previous fiscal year, audited, reviewed, or compiled by an independent certified public accountant to Troy. I think that would take care of it. They may never be able to get off the audit if they're required to do so, but I don't want them to have to do an audit because of us, because I think we just want to have something that's, you know, properly prepared and reported to the city. I think that's really our objective. I've been, I've been on the other end, I've been actually the one that's done this work and have sent out the bills, and I, I scratch my head because the audit really doesn't do any of these public agencies any good when a compilation or a review is really what they need. So it's really too bad, but if we could save them some money, if, you know, if the feds ever change their mind, or whoever it is that they need to have their audits for, then I think that would be good. So if you would like, I can move that, or if you want to read that into the resolution, I think we can do that as well.
I would read that in. If we could have the clerk reiterate what the Councilmember Haralak suggested wording is, so that we may all have it.
We don't have it exactly, we'll have to listen to the tape.
Okay. And, well, councilmember, if you would please repeat it, and then I'll own it on behalf of the body. Did you say, audit compile?
Well, the, the title, I think, should be changed from audits and reports to finance, to simply financial statements and reports. And then the last paragraph in Section 15, let's see here, after the words, audited... And then the last paragraph in Section 15, let's see here, after the words audited, you would add comma, compiled or reviewed. So, it would be audited, compiled, or reviewed by an independent certified public accountant to Troy.
So, that's the language we would accept to modify the resolution first read by Councilmember Beltramini, and that's the, under financial statement and report, audited, compiled, and reviewed by an independent. Now I can't even read my writing. Audit, did you say?
Certified.
Certified, okay, but thank you. More on the resolution, as suggested with different wording. Yes, Councilmember Slater?
I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure that the city attorney is okay with that.
Madam Mayor, just to indicate, there may be a slight delay because we should incorporate it, since the resolution that is proposed says that it's the attached agreement. So, you can either incorporate that into your resolution, and then afterwards we will take care of amending that, and then we'll need to get new signatures as well.
Okay. Councilmember Beltramini?
I would think that, as you said, it can be the attached agreement as modified to read Section 15 Financial Statements, and forward from there.
Okay, as modified in Section 15. Anyone else? Good, I think we've made some progress here. Vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
On behalf of the council, we really want to thank you for all of your work in preserving history and making it live for so many, both our residents, our youth, and those in the region. So, it's wonderful to have you all here. We thank you on behalf of the citizens and from the bottom of our hearts for all that you do. You may go in peace. Okay, moving on. We're on I five, Transfer of Animal Control Services to Oakland County. We have a number of resolutions, A, B, C, D, E. Is there a report? We received information on this before. A Councilmember Beltramini question, or?
It's, the D part of this resolution, I noticed in reading the new Chapter 90, that 90.70.10 still says the permit must come through the city clerk. And I noticed that all others had gone through the housing and zoning inspectors, so it's my thought that that one probably should have been changed too. So, before we forward this, I'd like those changes made, and then we can move it.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Robin.
How would we like to proceed, then?
Chapter 90, uh, y'all can move.
I'll move.
Okay. And what are you moving?
Well, I think I'm going to move them all as printed, and if there's some discussion, we can have it done, but I'll move them all as printed, with the changes that Councilwoman Beltramini suggested.
Okay, and has, is there a second on that?
Sure.
We'll have a motion by Councilmember Slater, supported by Councilmember Fleming, regarding I five, A, B, C, D, with suggested changes from Councilmember Beltramini, and E, as written. Has the clerk captured those changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion on these? Uh, excuse me, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Just for the benefit of the public, what this all means, should City Council pass this plethora of resolutions, is that effective April 13th of this year, all animal control services will be transferred to Oakland County.
Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Slater?
Just a quick statement or question for the city attorney. Our police officers still have the authority to enforce state law, as do the sheriff's department, on animal issues, even though we do this. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, there are still some state law provisions. It's a matter of what the resources will be dedicated to. Certainly in emergency or priority situations, certainly we do have the capacity to be there.
Other questions? Remind me again how many thousands of people this will cover? When the phone calls were made, did you say 175,000? Was that what it was?
We'll be, I'll be close, but not totally accurate. We get between six and 8,000 calls a year, specifically for animal control services from our residents. So, they'll now be essentially transferred to Oakland County.
And remember when we had the discussion before, Mr. Manager, that we did talk about in terms of the tens of thousands of residents who would, you know, respond to these things. Do you remember the number? Was it 75 or 175?
I don't, Madam Mayor, I don't really remember, I don't remember the exact number, but I think that the way it was described when we first began talking about this at council, was the difference in service levels because of the fact that we had a number of calls that were coming from Troy citizens going to the police department, and we had approximately four animal control officers that were answering that, six to eight thousand calls. And now that we're going to be transferring this to the county, I believe we're going to have one officer that's assigned to a very large number of people. I think it was maybe in excess of 100,000 people. So, the way that they're compared is slightly different, but that's the number that I think that you're looking for.
That's where I believe the 175,000 number came from, is a population service area, one animal control officer and one part-timer, as opposed to the four that we had had.
And no weekends? Thank you for coming up, I was trying to remember that.
It is 175,000.
Thank you.
It'll be one and a half, one full-time, one part-time, from South Boulevard to Avile to Quineter Adams, is what the county will cover.
So, this is less means less, and this is an example of elimination of some services which our residents did value.
That's correct. We're already down currently, as of March 19th, we're down to one police service aide functioning as an animal control officer. April 13th is the target date for the county to take over.
When you spoke before us, last month, I believe, we talked about the protection of life-liberating limb, should there be an imminent danger?
That's paramount, and officers will respond to that, and that would be a high priority requirement.
Any more questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a question while I have you up here. It was indicated in the memo that once these changes are approved by council, we would be going forward with public education process. And I was just wondering if you could expand on that a little bit. Obviously, we're having a discussion here at the table, and we've had it as this has come up in several meetings, but once we make the decisions, I would like you to give us some more information on what the plan is for educating the public, because there will be quite a few changes.
If this is approved tonight, we plan on marketing this to our public in every resource possible, the media, websites, question and answer sessions to any public group that wants us to speak on this. Our plan was to get together with our public information officer tomorrow and lay down a strategy between tomorrow and April 13th, to try and get this message out to everybody that animal control will be covered. There'll be a one number for them to dial to Oakland County Animal Control, and of course, if it's a life-threatening situation, then they are to call 911. Our communication center will forward calls, or give the number to our citizens if they call with, I hate to use the word routine, but an animal control complaint that the county would handle.
Reminder about licensing. Councilmember Beltramini before had a suggestion in terms of your education piece, if you were able to find any veterinarians in the city who?
There are no current veterinarians in the City of Troy, because it is currently a Troy license that we issue. Once it becomes an Oakland County license, the Oakland County Animal Control will solicit veterinarians to sell their licenses.
Thank you for clarifying that, we appreciate that. Anything more on this?
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Question for Lieutenant. Will the Oakland County Animal Control Division be conducting an animal census, essentially a door-to-door knock?
Yes, this summer they will. They use college students to do this.
I think it's a good point, I think, because that's a complete change, so that would be part of your education. Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there a question before us? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Harlock?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Moving on to J, Consent Agenda. Any exceptions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Harlock?
J 410, excuse me, that made no sense. J 4B and J 10.
J 4B, J 10. Colleagues, any more? Then is there a motion to approve with the exceptions of J 4B and J 10?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items J 4B and J 10, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
We have a resolution to approve the consent agenda, accepting items J 4B and J 10, moved by Councilmember McGinnis, supported by Councilmember Slater. The vote?
Mayor Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlock?
Yes.
On resolution J 4B, Councilmember Harlock?
I have a few questions on this, and I wanted to see if I understand. I guess the easiest way to start this off is if I can just get a brief explanation from staff, to make sure that I completely understand the limits of this contract. So, perhaps you can just briefly explain what this contract covers and what it doesn't.
Either Mark Miller, or Steve Van Detter, City Engineer, can explain this.
Good evening. The Green Star contract, this will be the final year of the contract, and included in that will be finishing up work on your council item, under the council items 1, 2, 3, and 4. These are various right-of-way acquisition efforts that are in progress, and Green Star will be finishing up with those acquisitions. And there are some court proceedings that are currently underway, that we expect to be closed in the coming 2011, 2012 budget year, and some closings on properties as well. So, we anticipate this is the final year of the contract with Green Star, and another project that we have coming up, which is Item 5 under, on the council item, Rochester Road, Barclay to Trenway, that work is being transferred in-house to our in-house right-of-way specialist.
Did that answer your question?
That definitely gets us started here. The, so the contractor is not responsible for, well, how does this particular contractor interact with the appraisal, the appraiser?
The Green Star, the appraiser is hired by the city. The purchasing department solicits appraisers, and it is recommended to Green Star, the appraiser, that should be selected for this particular work.
So, then Green Star is actually managing the appraiser and negotiating with the acquisition? Is that what's happening?
Well, we receive the appraisals from the appraiser, and from that, Green Star negotiates with the property owner with that appraisal in hand, and tries to make an agreement with the property owner. And sometimes that works out, and sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it ends up in court.
Okay, and I recall seeing in a memo something about two years needed to finish, I believe, some acquisition. I guess my question is, would this one-year extension be long enough, or are we going to kind of end this, if this resolution passes? Are we going to have to do another extension, or are we going to be bidding something out in the middle of a project?
We shouldn't. We anticipate this is going to be fully completed within the next budget year, starting July 1st of this year.
And so if there's some residual, say for example, if we're still settling claims and what have you, we could actually move some of that residual work in-house with?
It's possible we could do that. It's always best, though, to keep the same.
Sure.
People involved that are knowledgeable about the particular acquisition. It's possible it might linger over more than one year, and we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis, but we don't anticipate it. We think it's going to be wrapped up in the next budget year.
About how much work is this contractor doing for us on an annual basis? I see in a $70 to $80 an hour range, are we talking more or less than 2,000 hours of work?
Well, in the last, in the last 12 months, the value of that contract has been approximately $60,000. We've had, it's been multiple years, and I don't have the information for anything more than 12 months prior.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a resolution? Would you rather someone else move it?
I would.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to move the resolution?
Mayor?
Mr. Slater?
I'll move the resolution. J 4B, as printed.
And this is the standard purchasing resolution to exercise renewal option, Green Star and Associates LLC for right-of-way acquisition services. We have a motion. And from Mr. Slater, Councilmember Slater, supported by Councilmember Beltramini, further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I guess my discomfort comes from, I'm just very frustrated by how some of these project acquisitions have gone, and, you know, with respect to costs, and something must not be, something is there that I don't think is operating as best as it could, and I'm not sure what piece that is. I don't know if that's the appraiser piece, I don't know if it's the Green Star piece, I don't know if it's a city piece, or if it's a city council piece. But I know that Pat Petito, who is with Green Star, and used to be with the city when she was in her job as, working for us, did a very good job. So, you know, I'm kind of sitting here trying to make that decision. I'm just, I don't have that comfort level to give the renewal when I know that we could still go out and survey the market to see if we're getting what we, the best that we can. So, at this point, I can't support the resolution.
I think you bring up some very good points, Councilmember. I'm wondering if there's any additional information which would satisfy your thirst for a level of comfort. You spoke of Pat Petito, and we've all seen copies of what she's done for years and years, and I think that's true, if it were specifically, but it's not. Is there something that could be supplied? Would a further report, would? Oh.
I think Mr. Zirlag is signaling.
What we can do, I'm not sure if I can have it for next Monday, but I can have staff go back a certain number of years, say maybe three years, look at all of the purchases that we have made, and get an indication of how many were accepted, how many were not accepted, and what the disposition of those were that was not accepted, and identify the associated appraiser. We have, those records have to be someplace, and we could, if that would help you, to develop an indication. This is what Green Star, you know, Green Star made offers on 75 parcels, five went to court, and four of those five cost an additional 10%. And then do that with essentially all the appraisers that we've had under contract.
Mayor, if I might, I guess I just want to, especially as we're coming to the conclusion of the Rochester project, to kind of look at the processes that we, that we have in place, and see if, you know, see if there isn't something that, you know, maybe things are going better than I'm perceiving, but if we can just have kind of a look-back check to see. to see, and perhaps a discussion on council, because it was a very large project, and I know there's been a lot of litigation, and, you know, certainly the federal and local government here have spent a lot of money, as, you know, a big chunk of that project was for real estate. And, you know, even if it's a brief discussion or a brief report, I guess I just want to look and make sure we're doing things as best we can. And if there's a weak link, I would like to make sure that there's some way that we recorrect that, because I know for the most part, you know, we have a lot of experience in projects, because obviously in our history of this city, we've had a lot of roadwork that we've had to do. But I just want to make sure we're doing things as best we can, and that's it.
And I'm not sure the manager's report would satisfy exactly where you're going on that. However, I think that there is a sense that we want to guard our scarce resources, and we need to establish an accountability system to the best that we can. However, I'm not sure that this, nor that report, will establish that.
Well, Mayor, if I might, it may very well at least get things started, it certainly increases the amount of information that we have. One of the things, certainly if we can address some of the questions I laid out in my email to management, not necessarily tonight, I know there's a fairly good deal of information to get that response, but one of the things would be what the city manager has suggested in addition to, I know one of the things I mentioned in my comments were, if we can get a budget to actual, for the Rochester project, and also look at the percentage that we're paying for the real estate part of the project versus the construction part, and how that compares with actual, excuse me, with the budget and with other projects, and also perhaps just look at other communities to see if we're doing better or worse than others. So, benchmarking and a look-back, and if I can, I just think it's something that, management may already be doing this, but if we can actually be kind of informed of the processes so that we know that things are going as smoothly as they can be.
So would the direction be to pass this tonight, or postpone it until we receive further information?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm asking my colleagues.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think I move the resolution, and I think I'd just soon keep it going at this point. I think I share some heartburn, you know, with some of what's going on in the closed session, and I was planning on discussing a little bit of that tonight. So, I share some of that same heartburn, but I think we should move forward tonight with this resolution, and maybe we can get some of those other questions answered later.
Yes, Councilmember Fleming.
I would prefer to see the report, you know, I know we want to expedite things, but I think this deserves some more conversation. We may be talking about this in closed session, but I'd like to see the report that Councilman Howard is requesting for the next meeting.
Councilmember Beltrameenie?
I'm comfortable to pass this tonight, but I do think when there are only six of us here, that's a bigger percentage. My heartburn is not with the work that GreenStar does. I mean, that's, I, there are some people that other people hire that I wonder, why don't we get those people? But my concern is not with GreenStar, so I'm content to pass this based on my comfort level with that.
Well, I think it was quite appropriate that Councilmember Howrak bring it up in conjunction with this, because it's part of a bigger piece, and it is a process question. And we do need to have careful oversight of it. We've seen John R.'s just moving along quite well, and that's what's coming up. But I think that his points merit discussion on a, first a report, and then discussion by this council. But it sounds like we are ready for the vote.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Beltrameenie?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Howrak?
No.
Mayor Kerwin?
Yes. Moving on to J-10, Councilmember Howrak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is definitely an interesting situation here with respect to the, that's why it looked familiar, because when I first saw this, I said I didn't know we still had this. But I guess it was offered to public bid six years ago, and we accepted it, but the closing didn't materialize. And one of the questions that I have, that I didn't submit to management, is, because I only thought about it recently, is, is the individual or the entity that made the offer in 2005 one of the two interested parties that has approached us recently?
To answer that, no. The party who was interested in the property in 2005 is not one of the property owners. There's actually two that have contacted us that are interested, and they are, it does not include that purchaser back in 2005.
And then I had a question with respect to the, if the new zoning ordinance passes, and what could one foreseeably put on this property, other than expanding properties from the adjoining properties onto it?
Mr. Miller?
Single-family residential.
Which, we're looking at three-quarters of an acre, are we talking about, what, one house, or are we talking about two?
Off the top of my head, really quick, I'd say one house.
Yeah, that's what I thought. My primary concern at this point is, it doesn't seem like this is really the best time to be selling real estate, and our holding costs are somewhat negligible. We certainly don't have to pay property taxes, and the amount of taxes that we would collect on it would, at least, I can't see that the amount of property taxes that we would collect in it would be enough to offset what we could gain by holding it for perhaps another year or two or three. So I'm not in favor of moving in this direction, but at least not at this time, but certainly if we're able to get somewhere near what we had in 2006, which I just can't see anybody paying $200,000 for a three-quarter acre parcel right now, certainly not for one house. But, you know, if the majority of council wants to move forward, I just want the opportunity to vote against it if that's what's on the table.
It is a city resource, so it's a point well taken. Anyone else on this? Councilmember?
I, thank you. I'm kind of with my colleague here. It's like found money when we really need it. So right now, if it's not costing us that much to keep it up. Now, if it is, if you tell me that this three-quarters of an acre is what sends a mowing contract to a whole 'nother level, then that's another piece of the puzzle, but I'm not, and I know that the property owners next door, each of them would like it, but I doubt seriously that they're willing to pay $100,000 apiece to get it, so...
Councilmember Fleming, I'm going to call on you because, you know why I'm calling on you?
No.
Because you looked out in the back and thought, hmm, I'd like to kind of have... So you've been in that kind of situation, and a good caretaker of land that's behind you. And so I guess I'd like your input on someone who has kind of done this. I'm wondering if for the neighborhood itself, whether it would be attractive for those who would take a careful stewardship over some vacant property. I just wanted to hear that point of view, as you have done.
Okay. In my situation, there was a proposal to put a condo development directly behind some property that, that butted mine. And so I formed an LLC with my neighbors, and we purchased the property. And that was, that was when we did it, and we just kept the property intact. There's one structure on it now since we bought it, but basically my message to homeowners at the time, and still is, if you want to control the property that butchers, if you want to leave it as is, or develop it or whatever, then you need to own it. Because if you don't own it, anything could happen with it. So, I've encouraged people in the city, when there was a piece of property that they felt was, they would like to leave as is or develop, that don't wait until the developer comes and takes it, or someone starts to do, develop it on their own, and then it's out of your control, but to take the initiative to buy it. Having said that, this still may not be the right time for the city to get the best value for their property.
Well, we have no resolution before us. Is there someone who wants to make one, or not? Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
This is a policy issue, it's your choice totally. As staff, whenever we receive an inquiry that falls in the realm of economic development to increase our tax base, even though it be by a minute amount, we will come to city council to see how they'd like to have us proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do think that council raises some questions about being good stewards, and we're really looking at the resources, and that includes vacant land. And so it is, you know, I certainly can see both sides of this. Without hearing a resolution, though, we will take no action. Anyone else? It has come to my attention that all night long I haven't announced the results of the votes, but if you've been wondering, they've all passed. So, I apologize for that. We are, I think it might be appropriate this time to suspend our rules. We had a meeting earlier tonight and took no votes. However, our mayor was not able to attend, so it would be appropriate if this council chose to suspend our rules first, and then entertain a vote to excuse. Anyone?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Beltrameenie?
At this point, I would move to suspend the rules so that we could take action on an item not on the agenda.
Second.
We have a resolution by Councilmember Beltrameenie, supported by Councilmember Howrak, to suspend the rules. Question? Vote?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Beltrameenie?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Mayor Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
That passed. See? Good job. Okay. Councilmember Beltrameenie?
Oh, okay. I would move that we excuse Mayor Schilling from the earlier special meeting that began at 6:00 PM, because she was out of the county.
Support.
Resolution to excuse the mayor, supported by, made by Councilmember Beltrameenie, supported by Councilmember Fleming. Any discussion? The vote?
Councilmember Beltrameenie?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Mayor Kerwin?
No.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, we're memorandum and future council agenda items. As you can see, we have some memorandums. Anybody want to speak to any of those? Thank you. Yep?
Your Honor, we plan on having items A and B on the agenda as regular business items next week.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Howrak?
Just a process question on the, I guess it's K-2A. The agenda item that'll come before us is a traffic order, is that correct? To change the speed limit signs, we actually have to take a proactive stand on that?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm sure one of my staffers do.
Yes, there will require a resolution of city council to change the speed limits at the locations indicated in the memo.
Will that be through a traffic control order?
Yes, it will.
The, if I can just add, I have as a, certainly somebody who's lived in this city since I was born, really, other than when I moved out for a brief period in my childhood, and also somebody who's driven in this city, both as, you know, as a 16-year-old and somebody who's older, and certainly somebody who's walked a lot of these roads in campaigning. I'm not really sure I have a level of comfort with Waddles Road going from, going to 45 miles an hour, even if there are a number of people that are driving more than 40 already. I understand, I understand the, certainly understand the data, and I understand the reasoning. It's also the reason why Metro Parkway east of Dequinder is 55, or used to be 45, and why people come into this city on that side of town going about 55 or 60 miles an hour, until they realize they're at John R., and they need to slow down. But, you know, I think, I think one of the things, maybe, maybe we should, if we can hold off on this, is to get the information out, so that people know that the speed limit's going to increase, you know, especially on Waddles Road, which...